Pam Purby.
Kim Harman.
Harper Perleberg. All board members are present. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll get started right off. Information discussion item 3A, Plan for Certified Employees Handbook. Dr. Krieger.
Thank you, President Perleberg, members of the board. I'm going to introduce Dr. Jed Bowman, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, who is charged with the further development of the handbooks for the various employee groups in the district, and he will give us an update on that one, but particularly the one for certified employees. Dr. Bowman.
Yes, so, welcome, board members. Nice to see you again. And I don't have a formal handout. I just have an update on where we are with process. My understanding is last January, I think you were given an update by my predecessor about where we were in process. I don't know if you had any meetings between then, and I have some draft documents that I've been able to uncover, and so we have some of the work that those committees did last year that's been represented. So what the plan is, is to take that work and to build off of that so that we can get something finalized for our district by the absolute terminal end date would be the meeting in December 11th. And so I've met with some SCA members. We're going to have a committee of about 18. We're going to pair the one from last year down, and may or may not be some of the same people. I don't know. But what's important to me is that we have really nice, solid demographic, geographic employee representation on this, which will include some SCA members, minimally six, and six non-SCA members, and six administrators. So I'm looking for a group of 18 with six work groups, three each. And then our first meeting is scheduled for September. I have it written here. Where is it? 26th. So September 26th. And we're going to meet on mostly Wednesdays. We do throw in Halloweens on a Wednesday, and so too is our, in the middle of our fall break, we're not going to meet those, but we're going to adjust some where we can. I hope that we have a really nice aggressive timeline. We're going to meet weekly. I have found that when you do this kind of work, if you have a long pause between meetings, you lose momentum. So we're going to meet weekly, and we likely are going to have a facilitator. That hasn't been finalized. I think it's better to have a facilitator to guide the work than to be self-facilitating. I just think you get a better result. My goal is to, again, to take what was done, because there's some really nice work that's there, to take that as a draft and to build off of that, to put it in a really nice spot for our district to be really proud of as we go forward, to have a certified staff handbook. So that's kind of the plan of the plan, and I'm excited to begin this work.
Any questions from board members? Miss Board Member Harman.
It probably goes without saying, but within that mix of educators, it would be important to make sure there's both high school and middle school.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't mention that. And also on the administrative. So having leveled representation, elementary, middle, and high, absolutely is critical, as well as demographic. And demographic is a little more important to me than geographic, but it may work out that demographic ends up being geographic, if that makes sense. So, yeah, absolutely. You know, you try to have representatives for every possibility. With 18, hopefully we'll get close to that.
And this is just based on seeing this process roll out over the past year or so?
Yeah.
As part of that plan, it would be helpful for us to understand what's the communication component to this? So it's representation, but how is feedback solicited? How is information that's gathered and decisions that are being made brought back to the learning communities? How does input, how is it able to kind of bubble up so everyone feels as though they have a voice in the process?
Yeah, I have a term that I've used over the years. I call it the accordion process. And maybe I'm not unique to that, but you start here, and then you pull it out, and then you bring it back in, and you pull it back out. So you've got to probably have minimally two squeezes of it to, well, I mean, you know, it's just my terms, but to make sure that you're getting input so that voice is valued, so that it's not just a group of big team, that it actually gets to have that broader representation. So that's an expectation.
That'd be great. I'd encourage a full polka dance on the accordion.
I don't know if I can give you that.
Or, Rebecca.
So that was one of my questions, because I think in the past, what they were using is they were using, once they met, then it went out on iDrive, so anybody that wanted to see it then could have input. Is that the communication tool you'll be using? Or do you use something else?
I haven't finalized that. If that was a good tool that worked, then it would be who of us to not reinvent the wheel. But we will be able to provide input. Survey Monkey's another one, or using Google Docs of some fashion. So there are lots of different options for that. If the iDrive worked well, then we'll use that. I just don't know yet.
Could I ask a question? So when you put that, the communication out on what the committee is, how you're going to be communicating, can you email us and include it, copy us on that, so we'll have an idea?
You bet.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You may, again, take it for what it's worth, want to send out information, have the principal send it out, because sometimes teachers tend to read what their principals send out in their communications versus another document on iDrive or another email that's coming through that they just have to read. But if it's going through the principal, they, we found, I think in our communications committee meetings, that they have more tendency to read something that comes from the principal.
Great idea. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, you mentioned facilitator. I think that's a great idea. I, it was my understanding that that was very successful at the last go-around for this handbook, but you're not sure if you'll be using the same facilitator? Is that?
No, I haven't. That hasn't been decided.
That hasn't been determined yet. Yeah, I would just encourage you to kind of go back. There was a meeting, I'm sure we can get the date of that meeting, where the facilitator and some of the committee members actually presented to the board, talked about some of the challenges and then some of the successes that they had in that committee. And like you said, you're not reinventing the wheel. That's reassuring to hear, too, because we know they did a lot of great work then. And just kind of go back and kind of start from that point.
I want to validate the work that was done, and then you'll hear me say it, the more we work together, it's about getting better. So this is an opportunity to take what's there and to, I don't want to use the word improve, because it's not necessarily not where it needs to be, but that's just my mindset going into it.
Okay. That's great. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Perleberg, any? No? All right. Thank you so much. Important work ahead of you. Thank you. All right, we move next to our, next information discussion item 3V, immediate plans for Navajo Elementary School. Dr. Krieger.
Yes, President Perleberg, members of the board. It's been a tremendous week with some challenges, opportunities, and some wonderful coming together over Navajo. So it began, as I said, very early in the morning, a week ago Wednesday, with the notice of a fire having been discovered and the fire trucks working at Navajo. And it started out with Dennis and I talking about, is it extensive enough that we have to close school today? That's how little we knew at first. It was a fire. We've had fires in classrooms or smoke alarms going off in classrooms and usually contained there, so this was huge. And by the, by the middle of the day, we knew that it was, the students, not only did we call off school, but it would be sometime before they would be able to get back. So we went through the process of determining how we could get the students in school as quickly as possible, and with the, all of the district departments coming together and agreeing that keeping the students and the teachers together was the optimum, and that could be done at the Oak Street property with quite a bit of work to be done. But they all pitched in and did what had to be done in terms of changing bus routes, IT coming in and making sure that all of the systems that they were, that our schools normally have were in place and working, and they worked, IT worked 24 hours on that building. Food services, communications department, getting the right communication out to parents, the warehouse, the grounds crew, it was just a huge effort. Security was involved. Curriculum was involved in making sure that we could get textbooks and instructional materials in the hands of teachers as quickly as possible. It was a tremendous outpouring of work and coordinated effort, then on top of which was the great community support for the students and the teachers at Navajo, from other schools and their PTOs to people within the community, and certainly the Navajo community itself pulling together and getting the kids to school ready to go. The teachers even with the emotional shock that they had and without many materials that first day held school. Remember our motto, "We educate," and we did that that day. It was tremendous. And by, by the end of the week, two days later, supplies had rolled in from many different sources, instructional materials had come in, some of the furniture started arriving, all of that. Now, through all of that, of course, it was a great shock to the teachers, because they lost everything that was in their classroom, from the instructional materials to personal items that they have in their classrooms to help the kids feel at home. So sometimes it's pictures of family members and many other kinds of items. Some of that will never be replaced. But education took place, and we were proud of that. Great support, and great support from the parents who helped get the kids there on time, and in many cases also help, help support with levels of supervision that they could help in getting the kids to school on the buses and so forth. So from Wednesday morning through last night, late yesterday afternoon, we've been working with the insurance company and the insurance adjusters. Dennis Rayler especially has been our lead in that position. We told the Navajo teachers and the Navajo community last night that they will be at the Oak Street property for at least the remainder of this school year. In essence, what I, what I said to them, there are, there are three options that you will have to make as we gather more information, and as part of our overall plan, to look at the bond expenditures for rebuilding of schools and the agenda item that was introduced for consolidation of schools. But there are three options for Navajo. Restore it, which means take the property that is there, gut what has to be gut, gut it, probably replace a lot of the systems, the HVAC system, all of the other data things, telephone, Wi-Fi, all of that, all of the systems for the sprinkler system, the fire alarm, all the emergency pieces to that. And all of that, and probably the areas that were not affected, to be given new carpeting, painted walls, and spruce up, as well as be part of the, whatever new systems are put in place. So restore it is, is one option. Restore it would, would mean, our best guess at this point is that we would be able to move the students and teachers back into the building at fall break of next fall, fall break of 19. That's one option, if you choose. The second is rebuild it. Navajo is still one of the schools that is on the list for consideration of rebuilding that you will be dealing with as you look at all of the schools on that list and their communities, and the demographic projection, as well as the other criteria used in making that decision, which will be provided to you later in September, as we're gathering in preparation for a work-study session like this on April 6th, 4th, April, October?
October.
4th, sorry. And that would be a rebuild similar to what we did at Hopi and Pima. The third option is consolidation. As we are looking at all of our schools in the district that are under 500 students, I think that's, that's my guess as to what you're thinking. That has not been a board decision. You certainly have the right to, to edit that and make a decision as to which areas of the district you want to look at to determine whether or not you want to do consolidation and when you want to do consolidation. All of that, as you have asked, will be decisions that you will make as we supply you with as much of the information as you need, we think you need, hopefully even more than that, and in a timely manner. So those three things, restore, rebuild, consolidate. Now, restoring is our best guess, again, at this point, from Dennis working with the adjusters and being, having been through the building to look at the damage himself and what needs, we're talking about probably in the neighborhood of $3.5 million plus money from the insurance that we would get from, from that building. So let's say that might be totaled in the $5 to $6 million range. Whereas a rebuild, $18 million is what we spent on Hopi and Pima, so that's a difference. Restoring would probably mean, as I said, they could get in, back into the building next fall, a little over a year from now. Rebuilding would probably be a process where, from the time we said, yes, rebuild and start working on bids for architects and so forth, we're looking at least 18 months at that point. So that would probably put Navajo out for the second year at Oak. And the third is consolidation, and consolidation would mean, at the end of this school year, if you so choose, for whichever school we consolidate, we'll be looking at attendance boundary changes and dispersment of the students from the school, whichever school that is, that would be closed into the school which they are consolidating. And so that would be more immediate. That would mean that if Navajo was one of those schools, they would serve the rest of this, live the rest of this year at Oak, and then they would be at their new school in the fall. So those are the options. This is a summary of a, of a meeting, of the meeting last night with the community members, where many great questions were asked, some of which we are researching. The communications department was there, and they have put together a summary of those questions and answers that I will get to all of you, so you'll have that community input and see what they're thinking about and the things that we need to attend to. In the meantime, some of them are more immediate, bus routes, some adjustments, bus routes, for example, that kind of playground equipment. Those are more immediate needs that we have talked about, but know that those are some of the things that were mentioned last night. So the short-term issue is that as you begin to discuss the schools to be rebuilt out of the bond issue, and whether or not you consolidate, or how many schools you consolidate, remember that the Navajo students will be affected at their stay at Oak Street, which the staff all around has done a wonderful job, both the teaching staff at Navajo as well as the district staff in making that a school like the kids are used to. We still have a few little things that we have to do to it, but, but overall, it has come along really well. But their stay at, at Oak will have some dependence on what decision you make for them in the long run. Short-term, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the kids see Oak as their new school. It's still Navajo. It's just at a different location. Takes them a little longer to get there. But other than that, the teachers are the same, administration is the same, the classified staff is the same. They have new friends and bus drivers. But it's about the education of the kids in the classroom. And I just can't express enough my thanks to everybody for the support given, so that those kids don't miss a beat in their education. And it hasn't been easy for some of them emotionally or physically, maybe, but, but they're doing it, they're getting it done, and we're doing everything we can to send support and make sure that, that they have everything they need. So we're continuing to work at it. So that's the, the information on what the, what the immediate is for Navajo, but obviously it has long-range implications as well.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a couple, but, Board Member Krebitz.
Could you, first of all, thank you to, again, to the staff, district staff, school staff for helping with this transition, and also to the parents and students who are bearing with us during this adjustment, because it's a huge undertaking. But if someone was to drive by Navajo, the, as I understand it, the fire was confined to a storage space, to a storage room? Is that correct? And if so...
The fire itself, Dennis?
How, how did it affect the rest of the schools? Was it that sprinklers went off, so there was water damage, or is there asbestos that's preventing, you know, people from going back to the classrooms? When you say teachers lost everything, is it because of water damage, asbestos, they can't get in there, so that we can't use those materials elsewhere? What exactly was involved?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All that. The, Dennis reported late yesterday afternoon to me from, from the insurance company, where they had taken a random sample from different places in the three wings, the three classroom wings with the main office were the ones that were most heavily, were affected. The fire was at the back end of one of those, but the smoke went through all of the ventilation system. Asbestos was exposed and was carried by the smoke. Dennis reported that when they did their samples, they, sometimes in some fires, you find an area that was slightly affected, meaning that they, they might find in testing a handful of asbestos fibers. These samples, none of them had less than 7,000 fibers.
That's low.
For the same. Is that a lot?
It's a lot. Great. I joke by the end of the day.
So the asbestos abatement will be a huge expense and, and eats a lot of time as that happens. In the meantime, they, there are some things that can be preserved, things with hard surfaces can be cleaned and wiped out. Nothing leaves that building now without going through the cleaning process, correct?
Correct.
So anything that, that comes out will be asbestos-free, through very strict OSHA guidelines, federal guidelines on how you deal with an asbestos issue. And there will be inspectors all along the way to make sure we do what we're doing.
Do we have to put up some sort of signage that this was in, so that the neighbors know, or anybody just happened to drive by and like keep out of this area?
And it will, it will all be fenced off completely and all that.
Yeah. Well, I know the back is fenced off, but if you were to drive in the driveway.
Right now, there's a banner out front that says that the school's been relocated. The remediation contractor's putting up the necessary signage from an EPA NESHAP responsibility. So from a contamination standpoint, there's nothing that's going outside the building. It's inside the building. And they've secured the building to all unauthorized traffic.
Any other comments? Board Member Harman?
Just a couple of comments, and to echo Sandy's comments, just really thank you to the staff and to the administration that really pulled together on this, credibly demonstrative of our values and being responsive and student-focused. So thank you very much. Question on the restoration option? So I'm just wondering, in that plan, how much, if it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 to $6 million, is that correct for the restoration?
It's our best guess.
It's going to be a lot. There's a lot yet to be discovered, and insurance has warned me not to stick to a number. It's going to take some time for them to get through the layers and figure out what needs to be done. But as I look at a building and start adding up components of a building, it's definitely north of $3.5 million and could be much, much more.
Okay. And how much of that would be covered by insurance?
Insurance covers it all.
Okay, good.
So the question is, if we're going to restore the building and stay in the building, do we want to add our own bond dollars on top of that and really save some money? Because insurance is already paying for the general conditions, the insurance, the bond, all of those other things. So if we're, if they're paying for a Chevy Malibu and we want a Cadillac, well, we have to pay the difference between the Malibu and the Cadillac. But we're not paying for all of it. So they're going to restore things, and part of their requirements is if there are code issues that were grandfathered because of the age of the building, and they need to touch a particular system, they have to bring it up to code. So there are things that they will be doing that, under normal circumstances, they probably might not. So the fire alarm will be at the latest code, the intercom systems, the phone systems, that all of those things will be brought up to code. The debate and the layers that we haven't quite figured out yet are, I'm a big guy. I walked into a bathroom, who's been to some of those bathrooms? Tiny. And so will they bring that bathroom up to code, up to current ADA code? So there's other conversations that have to happen, what that will cost, what our commitment would be versus what their commitment is. So there's a lot still to learn. Even today, just before I got here, we got more asbestos results back on some other materials that were in the ceiling that we couldn't see. So it's still, we're still in discovery mode.
And so, just to clarify, bringing it up to code, not, you know, building a new bathroom, but bringing it up to a code, so a fire system, fire alarm system to code, that would, that would be covered by insurance as well, because it's replacement?
Yes.
Okay, that's great news, actually. Okay.
Yeah, their, their investment in the building will be very significant.
Okay. Bad situations.
Yeah, from the insurance. Okay. All right. Just, then just a couple other comments, and for Dr. Krieger, your comments, thank you for the update. So when we do talk about this on 10/4, I realized that $18 million was a ballpark number, but $18 million was for an 800-student school, and this is a 400-student school. So we need kind of an apples-to-apples comparison when we're talking about this. But this is great news, that actually it's pretty much, unless we want to make cosmetic or other improvements, it's covered by insurance. So that's, that's a great update.
Can I jump in there with a clarification?
Sure.
If that conversation goes too much, because would that apply if the decision was to demolish Navajo, the old building, and rebuild new? Would those insurance dollars still be infused, and how is that, how's that happen? I apologize if that's just something we don't know yet.
It's, it is a little bit of a different conversation. If we were to decide, if we were to decide to just raise the building... If we were to decide, if we were to decide to just raise the building and consolidate and we weren't actively doing the work that would have been prescribed to restore it, then dollars start coming away from that total. So if they say, let's just...
Because, because what would we not be paying for?
So are we talking about rebuilding? If you rebuild?
Yes.
If you rebuild, if you demolish the current building, why would we get less money from the insurance company than if they were involved in restoring it?
I think we should probably dig towards clarification for that because the conversation that I had with the trust was if we chose to not rebuild the building.
Okay. And it was because of things like taxes and other things that would be included in the restoration of the building. But it's like in a car accident, if your car, if your car is totaled, you get an amount. If you had it fixed piece by piece by piece, you would pay more because you're paying for all of the parts and all of the labor to do it as opposed to just getting the total. So we would get more from the insurance if we, in that example anyway, we would get more from insurance if we use insurance money to restore it, and they were paying for all of these pieces, which would include paying taxes on purchases and so forth. Then we would if we, if we just say demolish it, we'll just take the total.
Their obligation is what the policy says, and the policy says you're going to put it back to where it was.
To what it was.
They'll develop a number and they'll say, here it is.
Makes sense.
You do what you want. We've satisfied the policy.
But, but, can I jump in on this? But you, when you say put it back to what it was, is that just to find the dollar amount that we get, or do we actually have to put it back exactly where it was?
No, no, it defines the dollar amount, including bringing it up to code.
Right. The code's really the only thing. But we could build it differently?
Yeah. I've had buses burn up and not replace buses, but use the money for something else. That's not an issue for them. Their obligation is what the policy says.
Okay. Board Member Hartman?
So this is a good conversation, and it underscores why there's three different scenarios. And we really need to understand, as part of that October 4th conversation, we really need to understand what the options are and what the costs are because there are three very different options. And then we need to take into consideration what, where the community is on this as well. And then the last comment I just want to make, you just made a reference in your conversation here about some board members, I'm not sure which board members you've already talked to, on a 500-student minimum.
No, no. That was, that was me looking at the district and those that are the most obvious for looking at consolidation movie at that level. But I have said clearly, you have to answer the question that's been raised before, how small is too small? And you will do that. I'm using that as to let people know that we're not just looking at Navajo. We are, we are looking across the district at trying to be more efficient while still meeting the needs of neighborhood schools as much as possible.
I just wanted to underscore because things can be taken out of context.
Right.
And a hard and fast number is, you have to look at current enrollment, future enrollment, growth opportunities, so all those things are taken into consideration. One hard and fast number would be very dangerous to be floating out there, certainly from my perspective as board member.
Understood.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. And staying on that topic, we have discussed as a board the optimal size for a school. And what we talked about was approximately 100 students per grade level, four sections per grade, approximately 25 students per section. Some sections, upper grades will be a little bit bigger, lower grades a little bit smaller, they all kind of even out.
Yeah.
That's what we talked about.
So just to clarify, that's 600?
Depends if you're a K6, K8, right? It's 100 per grade.
If it's a K5. Well, just to put context around that, how that was discussed of four classes per grade level times five, grade levels are six if you're talking about K, is what the capacity of a principal can have to manage effectively that number of educators and that number of students. That would be the maximum number. That's not necessarily the ideal number of any, or the only number of any school because that's just based on that one criteria on what a site leader can effectively manage. But there's other variables that are important as well, like is it a neighborhood school? But those are the kinds of things we'll talk about.
I remember the conversation differently, but maybe we just have different lenses. I remember it as we were talking about how big to, what size to scope for the bond purposes to budget for these schools.
We just remember it differently. I remember the same conversation. I'm adding additional context to it.
Your context, though.
Yeah, what I heard.
Just want to make sure this is audio.
There's an opinion that the board didn't necessarily agree with that. The other thing I wanted to, first, before I ask the other question, I want to thank you for making the effort to keep the community together in this short-term move. I think, you know, we're fortunate that we happened to have an empty school. Well, it wasn't empty at the time. I know it had to be cleared out because it was being used for storage. But we're fortunate that we had a school that could accommodate this community, albeit might be a little tight. It's kept them together. And we learned, not this board, but boards long ago, learned how devastating it is to break up communities. So thank you for that. And then can you quickly address special ed and what happened with special ed and what their 12 to 24 months outlook is?
So there are three special ed programs at Navajo before the fire. There was a Panda preschool. There were two self-contained autistic classrooms. And then there was a learning resource center, which is pull-out from the classes. In reverse order, the learning resource center is a room where special ed teachers pull kids out for special learning, but most of the day they're with their regular ed kids. So that does not require a full classroom and not everything else. The self-contained autistic classrooms, we were, we were concerned that they had enough room in the rooms at Oak Street. And as we debated them, Cabinet plus Marge Rayburg, the Director of Special Ed, looked at it, and finally said, the teachers are all at Oak now, kind of looking at things. Can, Marge, can you get ahold of the two self-contained teachers and ask them where they would like to be? And they came back and they said, we definitely want to be here. Our kids will be more comfortable with other kids that they know and with teachers that they know and so forth. At the same time, we were fortunate that Dr. Sakov was at the school and helped design the school when it was for the alternative school, Sierra Vista. So she knew that there were a couple of classrooms next to a restroom that would best help the autistic classrooms. And so we got those classrooms for those self-contained autistic classrooms. The Panda preschool program had to go into a licensed facility. All preschools have to be licensed by the state. None of the rooms in Oak had gone through the licensing process. We did not, we did not, I guess, predict that contingency. We are starting that process now so that we have more options. But there was a room for the Panda kids at Yavapai and for the, no, the Panda kids at HoCo. That changed when we found out that the difference in the number of kids, one had to be at HoCo and the one be at Title. So we, at Yavapai, so the Panda classes at HoCo. So that required some changes in busing because Panda kids are picked up door-to-door and some adjustments had to be made, and so we had to push them off a day. They had, because their classrooms at Navajo were outside of the fire area, they were able to get much of their student files and things that were necessary to make sure that they were following the program for each, for each child and get those. There is a problem with storage, which we are working with HoCo to make sure they have storage for their things, because the rooms are a little smaller than what they had at Navajo. And the Title program went also to Yavapai, and that was fine. Again, with a busing accommodation to them. Some of the equipment needed for these classrooms could be recovered, and in other cases, we had other equipment in storage that could be used for them. And we were able to get the transfer of that equipment to the appropriate classroom for those special ed rooms.
So is the, let's take them one by one. So the Panda, which requires the licensing, you said we're pursuing the licensing now or no?
We're starting that process.
And so once that we complete that process, is there room at Oak? There's still no room. So we're going to have the process to have the licensing?
There are rooms, as I understand it, that we will continue to clean out to make them. There's still rooms that have storage. You were there today. I was there today, and the conversation I had with the principal was that they are out of space in order to bring something back. So I may be wrong on that. So I asked, pardon me?
All storage is moved.
All storage is moved, okay?
So they're out of space? So the...
They're out of space, Dennis? Okay.
So the HoCo and Yavapai students, Panda and special ed are going to stay there?
Panda and Title. Panda is in HoCo, but Title, one preschool is Yavapai.
Okay. And we'll still have the pull-out for the...
Yes. It's special ed. Learning Resource Center.
Learning Resource Center. That's, there is room for that.
That's still at Oak. As are the self-contained autism classrooms.
Oh, there is autism?
As at Oak.
At Oak.
They're still at Oak by the bathrooms that we discussed. And they didn't need licensing?
No. It's only preschools that require licensing.
Lots of moving parts. Thank you.
Yeah. I too want to acknowledge the tremendous effort and hard work that went into this very challenging situation, emotional situation, the entire parent community, the, our staff, administration. I really can't imagine the logistics that it took to get them all there and keep them learning. I really can't imagine it. Heart goes out to that community. My nieces attended that school until recently, moving on to Mojave and Sora. I know it's, it's a passionate community that is wonderful, and so our hearts are with them as they try and make Oak their home for the rest of this year. I think it's important, obviously, and as you've already said, Navajo has already been a part of a bigger dialogue in this district. And I think we just have to be incredibly sensitive, especially to that community. As those, as that dialogue continues, as it was going to anyway, that they are always kept abreast of those discussions, the rebuilds, the consolidation discussions that were already happening and in place. And this doesn't, this changes it to a degree, but it's, they're still a part of it and want to make sure that that community has, it's already going to have anxiety and stress, but as much as we can alleviate that as a district, that would obviously be ideal. Some of the more logistical questions I have for right now is transportation, how is that working? And their supplies? How are, how is that campus doing on those two?
I'll address transportation, and I'll let Dr. Huggett talk about supply, school supplies and materials. Brendan Wagner, our Director of Transportation, was involved in the discussions personally and on that campus the first couple of days for all of the bus runs. The one request that he made is that we push the start of the school back 15 minutes from 8:45 to 9:00, which then allowed him to free up buses. So instead of two buses at Navajo, we had to at least begin with the idea that we might have to bus all of the kids. Turns out that at least the first few days, that was not the case, although we are going to look at adding some, some normal bus routes that end, start and end at Oak to help some of the walkers. But the plan, the first week has been that walkers continue to walk to Navajo, go to the bus lane where we have adult supervision and wait to be picked up. The, there were two bus runs, those buses made their runs and then came back to Navajo and then filled their buses with the kids who were waiting. And we had a bus or two waiting in reserve, if there was overflow, to take everybody to Oak. We asked parents to, if they drive their kids to school, to please drive them to Oak. We will look at trying to relieve as many of those situations as parents wish for in freeing up more buses. But that nine o'clock start time gave Brendan a little more, just a little more flexibility, 15 minutes in terms of freeing up buses to make some of those runs. So there'll be more information going out to the community on those bus runs as those are developed. It was, it was a great effort to even in the original communication or even maps of the site so that the parents would know what the traffic flow pattern was expected before they got there, rather than getting there and have people waving at them and all this. It was, the session of all the planning was incredibly thorough, so many voices, so many different concerns, and to bring it all together was amazing. Very proud of the staff, how well they worked together. And I have to tell you, I thank the parents for their patience as well in going through this. Issues were not raised that were personal issues, and many of them had personal issues of getting their kids to and from school. But they didn't raise that and make us stop whatever we were doing to take care of it. Incredibly patient. So we are trying to do everything we can to relieve the other issues that, some of which came up last night, so that parents' life can go on and be as normal as we want the kids' lives to be at the school. So, Dr. Huggett.
Specific to supplies, the generosity of the immediate community and just across the entire district has been great. If you look at this banner, "We Are Navajo," that's truly what that felt like. They have a lot of the basic supplies, the notebooks, the pencils, the crayons, that came in pouring on literally Friday. Just boxes and bags just continue to come in. Then teachers were able to receive just some donations. I've been working very, very closely with Mr. Patzlof in making sure that they have the curriculum that they need, making sure that the technology with IT has been working just day and night to make sure that the technology is where it needs to be. They're working through some of the fiber challenges to make sure that things work within that building and looking for ways to really increase that technology. But it just has really been great support. Again, I'm staying very close to Mr. Patzlof to make sure that if anything is needed, we continue to support in any way that we can. But the students have a lot of the supplies that they need, and the teachers have been great at not just making sure that they get what they need immediately, but knowing that, you know, that difference between that need and that want, and they're making things work out. I've walked to every single one of their classrooms. What started as white walls has now turned into just learning environment where they're putting things up and really making it a home. And all of that has taken a lot of effort. Emotions have been high, but they, they're true professionals, and I'm very, very proud just of all the activity from the parents, from the teachers, from the administration, and the support from district has just been phenomenal.
So let me just mention this banner too. Victor Bobbitt from our Communications Department did this on his own with no suggestion. So that's the Navajo Buffalo with the insignias, mascots, if you will, from every one of our schools within the Buffalo. Very cool.
Board Member Cravitz?
So they have textbooks and supplies?
They have the curriculum, yes. And anything that they feel that they need, as they continue to process through the situation, as soon as they share with us what they need. I know Dr. Nance's office through Cheryl Redner has been working really, really closely with the school to make sure that they're getting the curriculum and the resources that they need, including the Science FOS kids. And so we're bringing it really to where it's in your location, and we're moving forward.
Great, thank you. Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I've got two more questions. The first question is, I think, an obvious answer, but in an effort to mitigate rumors, since it looks, since Navajo will now be at Oak for at least 12 months, 12 to 14 months. since it looks, since the Navajo will now be at Oak for at least 12 months, 12 to 14 months. The graduating fifth grade class, automatic matriculation into Mojave, even though Oak is currently in the...
Yes.
Okay. And is that regardless of whether they are open enrolled into Navajo or not?
It will be the exact same process as if they were on the old Navajo campus.
Okay. And then the second question is for Ms. Marshall and Dr. Creakard. Are there any, is there any board action that needs to be taken for statutorily or for ADE as a result of this move now that it looks like it's going to be longer than 12 months?
No, because we are not changing the name of the school or the state ID number.
You're not...
Only the address.
You're not closing the school or changing boundaries which are required by statute, so we can do that administratively for the time being. If it looks like it's going to be any longer, I would recommend the board take some action, but for now, it's not necessary. Okay, thank you.
Board Member Hartman.
And just one last follow-up question regarding the 15-minute later start. Do we have to add 15 minutes on the end or are we within minutes?
We just push the whole day back 15 minutes.
Okay, since that's been a very important topic over the last...
They also get out at 15 minutes later.
Okay.
I'll just follow up so that we can have it on public record. It was discussed, they missed one day, correct? Is all they missed? Do they need to make up that day?
They do not need to make up that day.
Okay, any additional comments, questions? Thank you very much for that update and thinking of that community. We'll move on to our first action item. 4A, approved terms of agreement with Superintendent Search Firm. Ms. Marshall or Dr. Creakard?
Ms. Marshall.
Ms. Marshall?
Members of the board, at your last regular governing board meeting, you tentatively selected McPherson and Jacobson and you asked me to follow up with the vendor after you had a chance to provide me with any additional questions. I did speak with Dr. Jacobson over the weekend and provided you with his responses to the follow-up questions I got. I did receive some additional questions today and I reached out to Dr. Jacobson and asked if he could join us today by phone so he could just answer your questions correctly. So I've asked our folks to have him on the phone. He's, Dr. Jacobson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you for agreeing to be with us on such short notice. We really appreciate it.
Not a problem.
So with that, I can certainly tell you what the questions for I received or you guys could ask the questions. It's up to you. I'm happy to do that.
I say, if there were people who wanted to ask questions today, let them ask. Because I, we, I sent them. I think mine were answered. Yeah, I sent mine in and mine were answered. I don't think mine were.
Let me just pull up my list.
I have some written questions in front of me. You want me to just address those?
That would be great. I did send Dr. Jacobson the questions I got today.
Oh, okay, good. Yes, go ahead.
And I really appreciate the opportunity to reach out to you tonight and this afternoon and respond to your questions and making sure that you've got all the information you need to go forth with this process. One of the consultants has to do with the fact that two of our consultants, Dr. Kamrazal and Dr. Joel, are seated superintendents and how would they have time to do this? I have, I do have seated superintendents that work for our firm. The condition is that it's into their contract and their board approves their working of this. Dr. Joel has been doing this with me for 25 years. Dr. Kamrazal's been doing this with us for 17 years. They do an excellent job. The next question talks about how they could devote time to that. I would suggest that you check with Dicart because both Dr. Joel and Dr. Kamrazal work with them and I think you will find some rave reviews about their performance to do that. Another question talked about, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject. This is John Creakard, the Acting Superintendent. I have worked with Dr. Kamrazal and Dr. Joel. No, I won't say that. Say that correctly. I have known them, Dr. Kamrazal as Superintendent of Catalina Foothill School District when I was Superintendent of Paradise Valley District, worked with her on statewide initiatives. Have a great deal of respect for her. I also know Dr. Joel. He and I were part of a national superintendent's group and we met regularly twice a year for six years and a well-known, very successful superintendent in Nebraska. I was very pleased to hear that those are the two superintendents that you are using or the contacts that you are using because I have full confidence in both of them.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your endorsement. And I just want to point out that Dr. Joel is our national recruiter because he's so well-connected around the United States and as your interim superintendent just pointed out, that he knows a lot of people and that will assist us in that. One of the other questions came up with...
Can I interrupt?
Yes, please.
Because I do have a follow-up question with that so I can get a little bit more specifics and clarification and then...
And this is Board Member Beckham.
This is Board Member Beckham. And then if, we're kind of straining to hear you, so I hate to ask this, but if you could speak up, even if it seems like you're yelling a little bit, because we're having a little difficulty.
Much better, thank you.
They turned the volume.
Is that better?
Yes, yes.
So the clarification is, I'm not questioning their competency. It's really, what actually do they do? I know that on the proposal, it said you have two teams of two consultants each, so that was a total of four consultants. We were given three names, so one question is, who is that fourth consultant? And then it said that they do the three days of meetings. So what do the superintendents actually do other than maybe have great contacts around the country in which they might know somebody who fits the characteristics that, or in criteria that we've given you? What do they do?
The three of us, because I'm on as lead consultant, will be with you at the board meetings that we have. There's three board meetings and working you through the logistics of the search. This is your search. We want you to own it. We want you to make sure that you, you know, is going where you want to go. We're going to advise you in that. We're going to be doing all the legwork for you, all the background stuff. When we get to the involvement of the community groups, we typically will bring in a team of consultants that's not of the primary consultants, with the exception of Dr. Kamrazal will be leading that. We try to have individuals that are representative of your district. We do have Hispanic consultants that are Spanish speakers. If that's desirable, we can do that. We will try to form that team after our first meeting based on your needs. But you have, you have the right to approve anybody that works for you and we will have their resumes and information for you so that you can look at that.
So that I understand, I'll pick up that last, the last part that you mentioned. So the two teams of two consultants is going to consist of Dr., and I might pronounce it incorrectly.
Kamrazal.
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 As the lead, and then it will be three other consultants that we will choose at that time? Is that what I heard you say?
That is correct.
Okay.
And basically what they're doing is they're meeting with your stakeholders, asking them questions. We have four questions that we ask them. They're doing recording of what they hear from that and that's going to go into a report that is presented to you with everything that we heard from everybody to do that. And I have teams of consultants that have, again, been doing this for a number of years in large districts.
Okay, so we have 29 schools and you've allotted three days. How do you typically break up those three days to meet all the stakeholders in that time period?
That's what we will be discussing at the first board meeting as to the logistics of doing that. We want you to have, you know, great coverage and making sure we're doing that. Having done this for 27 years, based on our background, we think with two teams of two, three days, that we can probably cover every group that you want us to, to do that. Now, that being said, we know we can't meet with everybody because of their schedules, not because of ours. And so we also post that input electronically on Survey Monkey. Our goal is that there's nobody in your district can say that they did not have an opportunity to provide input into this process.
All right, great. Now I'm going to go back to that first part that I want a clarification on and and so it sounds like, this is what I heard, the three consultants that were provided in the proposal will be meeting with the board and you said three separate meetings. I just remember reading one meeting for two or three hours, so can you stand on what those three meetings are? And it sounds then like the, I guess there'd be eight of us that would then figure out the logistics and what's best for this district together. We strategize together using your expertise in recruitment and placement? Okay.
Yeah, the three meetings are, meeting number one is setting up the search process, establishing the calendar, creating the selection criteria with the board, talking about which stakeholders you want us to meet with and just the logistics of the search. The second meeting is a report to you from what we heard from the stakeholder groups and then some logistics, again, as far as the interview schedule, some interview questions, making sure that, you know, we've got everything put together. The third meeting is the really big meeting, the important one, and that's where we're presenting individuals to you that we think are most closely meeting the criteria we heard from you and your community. And we're going to be spending time giving you background information on these individuals. We will have videotapes from them. We will have our report from what we heard from our vetting process. In that meeting, you will be deciding who and how many you wish to interview and bring in to the process. So those are the three meetings.
All right, thank you.
Board Member Hartman?
Thank you. Is it Mr. or Dr. Jacobson?
It's the doctor, but you can call me Tom.
Okay, all right, done. This is Board Member Hartman. Question for you, on the five phases, can you, and I apologize if this was in here. I just didn't see it clearly anywhere. Can you give the beginning date and the ending date of each one of those phases so we kind of roughly know what that 60 to 90 days looks like? I think it's 60 to 90.
Phase one is where we're meeting with you. So whenever you decide where you want to have that first meeting, that's going to be the kickoff from it. At that meeting, we're going to have a calendar and we backload the calendar, working with you to say, when do you want your new superintendent to be on board? When do you want him and her to start? And then we'll work you through where we're backloading that as to, okay, if that's going to happen, these are the target dates for our interview process. Based on that, this is our target for our closing date. Based on that, this is our target for our second meeting and our stakeholder meetings. And then obviously, we've got the first meeting. Typically, two to three months for a search from start to finish. But if we need more time, we can do that. You certainly are out ahead of the game, so we don't need to shorten the calendar at all.
So in terms of, because essentially, I mean, the clock starts ticking, although that may not be the best metaphor. It starts when we do the kickoff. When, when are you prepared or your team prepared to meet?
When are we prepared to meet? As soon as, as soon as we can find a common date for you and us and we would like that to be as soon as possible.
So for example, is today, is sometime in September work into your schedule? Early September?
We'll make it work.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and typically what we do is once you've decided, then we'll start working with whomever your point of contact is and doing the logistical work with you so we have those dates lined up.
Okay, okay. And then just one question, this may be for Ms. Marshall or Dr. Creakard. There were a number of references in here, but the ones that were particularly, I think, relevant were the large urban Arizona districts. So I think Peoria, Dicart. Glendale isn't unified, but it's relevant. Have we called those schools?
I did get that question. I remembered that Board Member Kirby had done a call on her own. I asked Eva Dino, our purchasing director, what was done and she said that they were highly recommended by Peoria, Unified and Dicart. She spoke to their purchasing directors who had a very positive opinion of the firm and its overall performance. She was following up with another person in her office who I haven't heard back yet from, but she had spoken with both of those school districts, so. They didn't do a specific reference check to the other references, but they did talk to Peoria and Dicart.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know...
And those are our two most recent.
That's great. Kyra, you talked to Kyra. Any thumbs up? That was a thumbs up. You're getting good references. Consistent with the letters.
My consultants do good work.
That's great, that's great. Well, we appreciate it.
And I talked with Deb Duval, who was most recently the Executive Director of Arizona School Administrators and before that Superintendent Mesa District. And she was familiar with the firm and spoke highly of the work that they did in those districts as well.
So then just one last question, just so it's, so if we're ready to start beginning of September, back to Ms. Marshall, Dr. Creakard, is there any reason that we can't get started or...
Nope, there's no reason at all.
Okay. I guess as long as we take action today, correct?
Right. You can't get started without a contact.
That's the one little catch. Okay. Any other additional questions?
I have another question. I think Dr. Jacobson, Michelle probably relayed this one. On page 25 of the proposal, it talked about if we don't find somebody right away, there are additional expenses, but not additional fees. What do you mean by that? What does additional expenses?
I've got that question here in front of me. I was going to go on to that. First of all, and I think you put that in there in the question. When we finish this search and you've interviewed your candidates and you say, "Tom, we've met some nice people, but we haven't found our superintendent." We don't want you to hire somebody to have a body there. We want you to have the right fit and that's our goal. And I think, if you recall, when we talk about our retention rate, we're very proud of that and we think that's very important. Now, let me go to the guarantee process. We have a two-year guarantee and if something happens to your placement, if they, if they become ill and can't continue in that two-year period, we conduct the search again. There's no additional fee, but there are expenses and that's basically advertising and, you know, some consultant travel to present individuals to you. But we don't, our fees are fee until you successfully hired.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Jacobson, were there any other questions you received that maybe we haven't covered yet or on our list?
There was, the final question was about our recruiting, about, it said after developing the candidate profile, do you send out postings? We have, we have 115 consultants and we also have about 900 individuals that have registered with us. We do not have a stable of candidates. We're not going to reach out to, we're not going to just bring people in front of you. Once you develop your selection criteria, we're going to reach out to individuals that we believe have that skill set. Some of our best candidates aren't looking for work, but because we do follow the careers of successful administrators, we're going to reach out to those that we think will be a good fit and encourage them to apply. Our goal is to have quality individuals in front of you and hopefully that you're having a hard decision on which one to hire because any one of the two, three, four would be excellent candidates.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments?
I have one. Board Member Kirby. This is Board Member Kirby. You know, we tend to look at this very one-sided in that we, as a board and as a district, want to do a very thorough vetting of an individual. But in this particular case with Scottsdale Unified, how are you going to, how are you going to also address with the candidates what I am sure to be concerned about Scottsdale Unified and the candidates wanting to vet us as a district? Have you had...
That is a great question, yeah, and I'm glad you brought it up. This is a two-way decision-making process. The candidate's choosing you as much as you're choosing them. So as we built into our protocol over the 27 years, we're, as we're doing our stakeholder groups, our first few questions to those groups, first question is, tell us a good thing about this community. Why would somebody want to live here? And of course, everybody that lives here has excellent ideas because that's why they chose it. chose it. Question two, what are the good things about your school district? You know, what are you bragging about? What's important? And what I say is, we use that information to sell you to the candidates as we go about. Second piece is, we encourage you to involve stakeholders in meeting the candidates during the interview process, and we tell those stakeholders, you're not interviewing the candidates, only the board can do that, as they said, it's a legal body, but you're doing two things. You're selling yourself to the candidate, and you're forming an opinion which you're going to share with the board. And we coach those groups on how to do that. So that was a great question, because this really is a two-way decision-making process, and we want to get the best people in front of you that absolutely want to be there.
Thank you.
Excellent point. Any additional questions? I'll let Dr. Jacobson sign off. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for the opportunity to answer your questions, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Are you in Omaha? Is your?
I am. That's the home office.
All right. Come visit us in the winter, then.
Well, once we get a date, I'll probably be seeing you in September.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. Ms. Marshall, Dr. Kriegerd, did you have anything more to add?
I don't.
Only that I think I shared with President Perleberg that when I present my goals to you, I will have a goal that includes assisting Mrs. Marshall in this search. I have a vested interest myself in you selecting the best person. I will be assisting. And now I can see that my goal is to be home by Christmas.
Well, that's not necessary.
No.
Where that come from?
No.
Well, you select somebody, and that person can start.
Oh.
We were thinking that.
Somebody has a contract that goes through, most likely.
Right. Unless they get released, but yeah, that's.
No, that wasn't what I.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just injecting a little humor.
Maybe July 4th.
Well, glad to hear it's humor, not a wish or something.
All right. So if there's no further questions or comments regarding the terms of the agreement, are we ready to make a motion? Board Member Hartman?
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the terms of the McPherson-Jacobson LLC agreement with the superintendent's search firm. And can I add that we'll begin, commence the process in September, early September?
As soon as possible. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And get to work.
Thank you.
All right. So we move on to our last action item, 4B, approval of Arizona School Board Association 2019 political agenda recommended by the Legislative Committee. So our delegates, if I recall correctly, our Board Member Beckham and an alternate in Board Member Kravitz.
Correct.
Correct. And that meeting's coming up. Ms. Marshall, I know you, and I had discussed earlier the question of, I think today, our goal really is to give direction, if any, to our delegates. Is that correct?
Yes.
Board Member Kravitz?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, before we get, before I even go there. I'm a little confused, because last year, I recall, we voted on continuing our membership in ASBA. And now, I know there's two components to that, if I'm not mistaken. There's the Michelle component, which gives her access to all the legal advice that they provide, although we seem to be providing more legal advice to them than they to us. But, it's true. So are we still going to be voting on membership?
I'll let Kriegerd answer that.
What's the status of that? Because does paying for Michelle give us entree to this? But if we haven't paid our membership for regular members?
When this came up to us and we investigated what had been a discussion in prior years, we knew that they were too ask. It's actually the policy updates that are done by them, and as well as your membership. And it turns out that they are connected. You cannot have one without the other. So the bill was paid, because we do not have, nor do I desire to have, a legal department the size that would require to do those policy updates.
So, okay, so, let me, so, let me get my thoughts together. We, so this idea that there's two separate things is not correct.
They have one bill that's divided in two pieces, but they are connected.
Because I know that for some of their activities, there's the membership price and the non-membership price. So you can't not be a non-member, but then also be availed of their legal services. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's policy services. They don't give legal advice.
Excuse me, policy services. No, excuse me.
They specifically do not give. No, no, they specifically don't give legal advice.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. And then, Ms. Marshall, did you want to clarify again my understanding?
After our conversation earlier today, I did go look at, the item actually says that the governing board will approve the proposed political agenda as recommended and direct its delegate as to how to vote, direction in voting. So this document is quite lengthy. I don't know that you're.
Okay. So that is actually, in the ASBA document, it says approve?
I'm sorry. That is what your item says.
The cover letter, I thought, said that also.
That's what they were.
That's where I was confused, because what I saw on the cover letter, but I just might have misinterpreted it, was just that we are to instruct our delegates.
You're guiding your delegate as to your board's direction in voting. And they've given you.
Well, is, the other thing, sorry, I'm jumping in again, is, are we voting on each individual? What is the ASBA asking us to vote on each individual item? Each, you know, I understand that, you know, there's more, there are specifics under each specific, there are like four main points, I think it was, and then there are specifics under each item. But I don't see a yea, you know, or yea or nay for each item or.
My understanding of what they're asking you to do is support the four general items. They always have local control on here, for instance.
Adequately fund schools, improve outcomes for all students, and require public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education. So you're not going line by line and saying, yes, I agree with every one of these things. They're asking the board to give direction to the delegates as to these four main items.
Right. Okay. And I pulled up the cover letter, and this is what I saw, but there could be something else I missed. And it does simply say, please cop and distribute the entire packet to all board members and place the proposed 2019 political agenda on your next board agenda, in order to guide your delegate as to your board's direction in voting. All our board members and superintendents welcome to attend the delegate assembly. Each member can only have one. So I read that and interpreted that to mean, that's really our action today, so to speak. But.
Well, I mean, I was, when I was reading through this, it says, improve outcomes for all students. The only thing that I would say if or when we go to this meeting is, outcomes based on what? Are we comparing ourselves, you know, all Arizona districts to one another or on a national level? Because I think that we should compare ourselves, however, and I'm not talking about any kind of test, per se, you know, I mean, AZ Merit, I don't know how you can compare that to another test unless, and again, there's more to educating than just taking a test, which is why I find the last sentence of, improve outcomes for all students, you know, interesting, because it says, they should spend far less time and energy tailoring instruction to achieve the desired assessment results, as opposed to using assessments to drive quality instruction. That sounds familiar to me. It sounds like something that we've been saying. So, I mean, you know, I like that sentence, but again, what are we comparing ourselves to? Are we comparing Scottsdale, you know, to another district out in a rural area, or do we want Scottsdale to be the best district, you know, in the top 10 in the country? For me, it's among the top 10 in the country, not just top 10 in Arizona.
Board Member Kirby?
One of the challenges I have with this process is, it's almost in violation of one of its four planks. And one of those four planks is to preserve and strengthen local control, but yet, at the same time, it is dictating exactly what the political agenda would be for the entire state, all school districts, and it's either a yes or a no. It doesn't sound to me like there's any healthy room for meaningful, thoughtful feedback. And so, you know, if we want, listening to you talk a second ago about the testing and who does Scottsdale want to compare itself to, that is local control.
Right.
But yet, when you read, when you peel the layers behind this document, that's taken away from us, from this board.
Board Member Hartman?
So I'm just going to share this from the context of being an ASBA delegate for the past couple of years, and Allison, Board Member Beckham, you were with me last year. The feedback that I would have is that this request and the way they framed it is significantly different than the prior years. Their goal as an organization is to basically be an advocate for public education in the state of Arizona, which is like boiling the ocean.
Right.
So how they used to approach it in the past, if we all recall, there were about 20 items, and through good rigorous discussion, we identified what our top four were.
Right.
Because you can't boil the ocean on this. You've got to be very focused on it. And this process basically is boiling the ocean. So I am not comfortable with this agenda.
This is like all nice and fuzzy and warm, but.
And it may be just fine, but the point is that this actually is lacking accountability, which is one of the tenants as public education we're seeking for, but by dumping everything into four giant buckets, one giant ocean, there's no accountability for what we are trying to hold ASBA accountable for.
There's no accountability for ASBA. How are they going to measure their effectiveness?
Right. So I just feel they maybe, the intention may have been good to simplify, but I think the unintended consequence is it's oversimplified, and now it means almost nothing.
Yep. I agree with you.
Right. Board Member Beckham?
So I called them to find out, because it was a change in what I experienced last year. And that was the idea, is that what they found was, is that having 20 items to go down to the state and talk about was just too much. So that's why they kind of put it in larger buckets, and they're very broad. So what he said is that we are hoping that if you agree with these, you will be voting to say, these are the four main buckets that we will be going down and, I don't know if this is the correct term, lobbying for or fighting for. But the reason they have the supplemental is that that's for the boards to go through. And just like the guidance at the delegates' meeting, they will be going through each one of those and asking the delegates to give their opinions and providing guidance. So they're expecting a robust conversation regarding each one of those supplemental items to guide those larger ones. Now, I'm not saying it's right, wrong, and different, it's going to be effective or efficient. That's just why they were doing it the way that they were doing it and what they were expecting. And what might come out of it is, is that what we can, Sandy and I can take back, if this is the discussion and the majority field that way, is we're not comfortable with that. And then that will be important for them to hear.
And just to add to that feedback, first of all, thank you for taking the time to call to help clarify.
Oh, thank you.
But not only are we not comfortable with it, the devil's in the details. What we did in the past, those 20 items, we picked our top five, and then every district that was representative, put them all together, and it wasn't 20, it was number one, two, three, four, five. So it was, now we have no input, the way they designed the process. So just, if they want to improve it next year, that's what they're going to do, I think.
I don't mean to minimize this document, but this just popped into my head. To me, this reminds me of the Jerry Maguire mission statement, you know, from the movie. It's, there's nothing concrete here. It's just, hey, this is a good memo, and that's great, and there's nothing wrong with that, but again, it's nothing concrete to me.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I'm not comfortable with this just giant bucket of, and we're going to put our stamp of approval on it. We have no idea really what ASBA goes to, to our legislators directly, and says, here's what our school boards want. There's nothing specific here, there's nothing detailed. The devil is in the details, absolutely.
I think we.
Just not comfortable with the tactic at all.
I think our district gets more out of this one when SPC used to go to the legislature and speak to our legislators for our district. I remember, I believe I went with you.
Yeah. These aren't mutually exclusive.
Yeah, they're not mutually exclusive, but I feel that, you know, we're already a member of ASBA, you know, yeah, we can give our input, but we get more from our lobbyists and from actually, you know, our parents going down to the legislature.
Can't disagree.
So as far as direction.
I think, I mean, maybe we could summarize, is, it's the change in process has made this board uncomfortable. If the other, and what I'm hearing, the reason they changed the process is because the old process, they felt, wasn't working. You can look at the results, and you could, one could say, nope, you're right, that one wasn't working either. I'm not sure this one is going, well, I'm not comfortable with this new process. So that, I think, would be the feedback.
Yeah. Well, and the question is, at least you could look back in the past and say, okay, this didn't work. You did not accomplish this goal.
You didn't accomplish your goal.
Explain to us why it wasn't accomplished. Where were the hurdles? Where were the challenge, whatever? You can't have a conversation like that after this, that there's no follow-up of ASBA. Okay, what were you able to do and why, and how is it meaningful to us and our goals? You can't have that conversation at all.
Maybe a person, if they ask for what were some of the ideas of your own school board, I think the SPC is one of them. But with that, what I'm, the other one I would give them is, encourage districts, boards, and parent communities to meet with their own legislators, because that legislator has a duty to represent their district. And if that school district is in their legislative district, then they can give very specific, concrete examples in detail about why they are pursuing one policy initiative over another one.
Right. Training, and actually providing the training for their boards or community members would probably be much more valuable.
And if ASBA could facilitate those kinds of conversations, and, you know, maybe it's getting Paradise Stallions, I'm just, Paradise Stallions, Scottsdale, and Madison, whoever's in LD 28, for example, together. If ASBA could facilitate, I think that's meaningful.
Right.
And then, and then maybe from there, they can draw out themes across the state, because I guarantee you, what Maricopa County's challenges are, are very different than what the rural.
Right. If you're a small district, you're right, and what you need is a lot different than what we need or some other larger districts.
And I will add, having gone to one of the delegations and other meetings, I was shocked by that. Like, I just had really no comprehension going into it, these small rural districts and very different needs that they have, very different conversations, dialogue and interests. That was an eye-opener for us. We're here for Scottsdale, so.
So you have to ask for a motion?
So.
Is it?
So is there any motion to be put on the table at this time? I don't see one. So I guess if there's no further comments from staff, Dr. Kriegerd, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Kirby. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Oh, wait. Do we have agenda requests?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. You can give me one. Okay. All right. What is it? 434.
Woo-hoo! Amazing. Wow.
And Kim, you could.